Six o'clock, and so I will call the Monday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, regularly scheduled school board meeting to order, and we'll note that all members are present with the exception of Nathan Anderson. And we will start with the plenarium.
The mission of fully public schools is to bring together students, parents, staff, and community to provide quality education with an emphasis on developing the full potential of the individual.
Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Steve Minter from Minter Blumbeads and Gavin, and they are here this evening. They are the school district's legal consultants. They're here this evening as a resource, and I believe you've introduced yourself to the board?
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have open forum for citizens to address the school board. And just wanted to state that fully public schools welcome input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during the open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students who sit in front of the board. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our communities, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner, while guarantee character, facts, analysis, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberately discuss or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum, although the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. We have the sign-in sheet here. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Patrick, seconded by Wayne for approval agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. We have the consent agenda before us, and I'm reading the motion and the second for the consent agenda, which includes the board mails and the approval of meeting minutes along with the consent.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Wayne for approval agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. We have the consent agenda before us, and I'm reading the motion and the second for the consent agenda, which includes the board mails and the approval of meeting minutes along with the consent.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We have a resolution for accepting gifts. Those gifts include knife ritter. We have seven hundred and fifty dollar value safety glasses for our high school students. The Optimist Club is donating three thousand three hundred dollars for fourth grade kindness retreat. Patricia Watson in memory of her aunt Donna Henry is providing two hundred and fifty dollars for books for the elementary school library. Hoberns has donated one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents for more reports, and that's to benefit the intermediate school students. Holy American Legion has two cases of straddle lips to the child nutrition department. Rob Nach is donating soft serve ice cream to the child nutrition department. So I read the motion and the second, the resolution accepting gifts.
Motion to accept gifts.
Second. Motion by Wayne, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We have the resolution for the sale of Saint John's portable, and this is going to be a roll call vote because that's how the resolution is written. And along with the sale of the portable, Saint John's Church in Foley have the buyback option following the original sales agreement that was dated October twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-six, and the bill of sales for one dollar. We are selling property as news, and I will let Dr. Perry further explain the sale.
I don't think I have anything to add, Sharon. I think you said exactly what you needed to say.
Okay. And legal consultants look over the entire resolution and what else can they quit playing leave.
There are some documents that I hear need to be signed following the meeting, but we do need a resolution.
So I read the motion and the second on the sale to Saint John's. Oh, Saint John's, to Saint John's.
Motion for sale of the portable to Saint John's for one dollar.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Patrick. This is a roll call vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
And I read this, and we'll note that on the resolution sent absent, so we'll note anything. We have the dental insurance, which is a discussion action item starting on January first, twenty twenty-five. It's been advised by Aaron Casper and Adam Cook of National Insurance Services to go self-insured with a dental program. Dr. Perry, do you have further explanation on that?
I do. Our committee met last week. It was also a recommendation from the insurance committee, and the change would be effective on January first of twenty twenty-five. For the employee, impact will be very minimal. What we were given as a quote was from Health Partners, currently it's a three point five percent rate cap, and we believe that we'll have a three percent increase in our dental insurance if we are fully self-insured. So it'd be less for employees who feel that that extra level, about three percent, will be enough for us to self-sustain on our own, not dental health insurance.
Same kind of coverage?
Same coverage. Everything is the same, so I guess the very minimal change is that we'll just be self-insured.
And if today comes that not being self-insured is not the best option to adopt?
To be looking at every day.
Right. It's kind of where we could get our feet wet, too, to see if we would want to expand that idea.
We have two board members that serve on the committee, and we'll go and do our anything more.
No, Aaron did say that there are reasonable districts that have self-insured dental, and it's a financial, financial single outcome for those districts as well. So it's to the benefit of the district to be self-insured. And then, okay. I read the motion and the second. If there's no further discussion on our dental insurance policy going to self-insure, that's one more twenty-five.
I'll read the motion. Second.
Motion made by Wayne, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. And we have the MCA data review, and it's a quarterly full review. This is a discussion.
I will be studying the presentation, and then our board of principals will also gather information regarding their building goals. And we just had a meeting with our district advisory committee as well, so I'd like to talk a little bit at the board table about World's Best Workforce. And we talked about this last year, and World's Best Workforce is to ensure that school districts and charter schools in Minnesota enhance student achievement, teaching, and learning supports. And one of our legislative updates, too, is that this plan will have a different name starting next year, and some components of the plan will change as well. So this year, we are going to report on the following goals. All children are ready for school. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career in college, and all students graduate from high school. In the following years, we're going to, in our plan that we'll see. If you just need access, please. Maybe need to request that. So while Kelly is doing that, and I'm trying to multitask for a minute, you'll notice that again in the home summary, that you'll see a goal of all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy. And that goal, we won't report on that in future years. Because of the lead act, each student now is reading proficiency in each grade level. And so that goal will be replaced by a work on line. And so again, we're not sure exactly what that necessarily means. We have some ideas, and then again, to make that measurable, we're talking and we're discussing, so we should be able to come back to the board once we simplify the plan in a couple months. So our first goal is all students ready for school. And a goal last year was sixty-three percent of our students in kindergarten will achieve in a low risk or advanced proficiency levels as measured by the FAST, the reading composite score in the spring of twenty twenty-four. And our result was seventy-one, seventy-one point six percent of our kindergarteners achieved low risk or advanced proficiency levels as measured by the FAST, reading composite score in the spring of twenty twenty-four. We did meet that goal. And if you look at our second goal, as I mentioned, all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy, we will not see that in the future, but to report back on the result, our original goal was sixty-seven percent of students in grade three will achieve proficiency on the MCA reading and test by the spring of twenty twenty-four. Of our students, it was fifty-six point eight percent of our students achieved proficiency in grade three, so we did not meet that particular goal. One of our next goal was closing the achievement gap between our student groups, and we looked at our students at our pre-reduced and not pre-reduced population, and we looked at our gap, and we wanted to decrease the gap from fourteen point six percent to twelve percent. We actually saw an increase in our gap with those learners. So our gap is now fourteen point six percent to fifteen point three one percent. Our next goal is all students career and college ready by graduation, and this is focused on the high school students who improve their composite ECT scores to show a rise of point five from the current score nineteen point three to composite score of nineteen point eight. And our students, the composite score achieved is twenty point nine, so it's a growth of one point six. And then the final goal is all students graduate. And our graduation rate will be over ninety percent as measured by local attendance data measuring the number of seniors on October one of twenty twenty-three, and those receiving a diploma in May of twenty twenty-four. And our graduation rate was ninety-three point three percent. So we did meet, we didn't meet that goal. I'm going to ask Mr. Kruger. We're looking at just a quick review of the building goals from elementary, and then we'll talk about what the goals are for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So up on the screen for you, school board members, is just a review of last year's student achievement goals at FBS. FBS has student achievement goals in the area of reading and math. We have a, we have two goals for each area. One is measured by our past assessment, which all students K three participated, and a goal for the MCA test, which only third graders that have had FBS participates in. So our goals last year for the FAST assessment in reading were that seventy percent or higher of our students would demonstrate proficiency. Our achievement at the end of the year was sixty-three percent of students demonstrated proficiency. Our MCA reading goal was for seventy percent or higher of our students who reached proficiency, and our year-end result was fifty-seven percent. Then our FAST A math scores first was six, the goal was seventy-five percent, sixty-nine percent achieving proficiency. And then the MCA math, the goal was eighty percent, and our end-of-year result was seventy-six point nine percent. So that's, that's the, those are the results. That would be put forward once more. That's great. So the next slide of the presentation is what our building goals are for this year. We continue with the same structure for goals, having a FAST reading, an MCA reading, and a FAST math, and an MCA math goal. We took last year's results approximately, and our goal is approximately five percent higher number of students proficient this year. So our goals will all be raised from last year approximately five percent.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Mr. Barrett?
Right. Our FIS building goals for twenty-three, twenty-four, our first goal, much like the elementary, it's a reading and math focus, so to increase student achievement, each grade will implement star assessments in math and reading twice a trimester, and use the data to obtain a three percent increase or above eighty percent proficiency in reading and math MCA during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And everybody in the, in the intermediate school states MCA's, you know, so all students grades, fourth grade. So reading in eighth grade, we saw a four percent increase. Seventh grade, we saw a twelve percent decrease. Sixth grade, we saw a ten percent decrease. Fifth grade, a four percent increase for reading. And fourth grade, fifth grade had a four percent increase, and fourth, fifth grade had a four percent increase, and fourth grade had a five percent increase. And for our math, eighth grade had a three percent decrease, seventh grade had an eight percent decrease, sixth grade had a fourteen percent increase, fifth grade had a six percent decrease, and fourth grade had a two percent increase. Those, we review our goals for twenty-three, twenty-four for math and reading. We'll move on to the next slide, knock that point. Our goals for this upcoming school year, much same structure as last year's goals, which will increase student achievement, each grade will implement star assessments, math and reading twice trimester, and utilize the data to obtain a three percent increase or above eighty percent proficiency in reading and math MCA's during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we're also looking at, our second goal is how we increase rigor in classrooms. So again, that's knowledge, working different strategies to personalize students that might be, that already know the content at one extent they're learning. Then our third goal is to continue to work with our PVS team to improve student climate and SAT climate in the building of twenty-four, twenty-five school year, using students, student behavior data with our SAT each month target potential problem areas to reteach those applications in a better way.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Boss?
So last year, we basically had goals in two areas. One, as you heard about, was our ACT goal. Our goal was a point five increase in our composite score from a nineteen point three to a nineteen point eight. We exceeded that. We scored a twenty point nine, which is good, but we did have a few less students take it, which is not good. So data can do a number of different things for you. Our second goal was to continue, continue increase in the student passing rate. So rather than calculate the passing rate, I calculated the failure rate, because if you didn't fail, you passed. So we had a failure rate of four point nine percent the year before, and we reduced that by eight percent down to a four point four percent. So our reasoning for using that is if we're truly doing standards-based grading and students are meeting the standards in their class, then hopefully they're performing on the MCA tests. Part of the issue with the MCA test, and it'll be maybe talked about later, is students opting out of that test, and so it's tough to get true data if students are taking it. So if we look at the data from their classes and their standards, then hopefully we can make a connection. For next year, our goals are quite a bit the same. Increased by, again, half a percent on our ACT composite score, trying to get to a twenty-one point four, which is, could be a pretty good composite score for an entire class of students. Continuing to reduce that failure rate by having teachers support students and look for those students that are struggling. But we're also adding an attendance goal. We need to improve our overall attendance rate. As we know, attendance rates across the state and across the country have not bounced back from COVID. Students are absent at record numbers, so we want to get students back in the building on a more consistent basis, and then also reduce the number of discipline events. If teachers aren't having to discipline students, hopefully the kids are in the classroom, and the teachers are able to spend their time teaching them, or they're not. So all of those flags will be included.
Thank you for sharing your building goals and the results. It's always good information to have. And moving on for our MCA review, and just a reminder to the board that we do administer MCA's in then reading, math, and then science, and we administer the test each year. And our MCA's, they are each Minnesota academic standards, and for our standards, it's specific to a grade level, so what students should be able to know and be able to do in each of our grades. And all students in Minnesota public schools, including charters, take MCA's, and they're administered, and Mr. Bierman had talked about all of his students in his building, so three through eighth grade, so one grade at elementary, but primarily the bulk is in intermediate school, and then also we have grade levels in the high school. So students in grade ten take reading, and then in grade eleven, they are administered the math test, and science is in grade ten. And students also in fifth through eighth, fifth and eighth grade, take the science and CAs, and it is an all online assessment. One thing that I do want to say, just to remind the board when we look at some of our data, is that we do have a number of opt-outs in our district, and it's really important that we encourage, and I know we're going to do some work this year as a district to encourage our students to take the MCA's, because it's really important data that we have here in the district, and helps us with alignment of our curriculum and instruction aligning with the state academic standards. And really, it's for curriculum improvement and how we can support our students, so we're able to see the areas that our students are very strong, and the areas that we need to focus some growth. So again, it is important to take the assessments, because it's a great way for us to evaluate our curriculum and our instruction. Looking at the next slide with our MCA data review, you'll notice, and this is from a Minnesota report card, so anyone is interested in diving a little bit more deep into this, you're welcome to do that. But if you notice, I'm missing twenty twenty. In twenty twenty was a COVID year, so we did not give an MCA assessment. So coming back from COVID, you can see that our test scores were lower, which is not a surprise, and the one that COVID has shown is that kids do need to be, they need to be learning from their teachers. And then one of our goals, of course, is to return to pre-COVID numbers. And so if you look, each year, we've had an increase, and you can see that the increase is slight, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that as we go through the different slides in the presentation. The next slide is looking at our MCA data for math, and if you notice from the, from the table, the black is from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year, and the highlight is the twenty twenty-four school year. And if you look, we've got the statewide mean, and then we have what our mean is, and just as a reminder, when we're looking at the score, so if you see anything above a fifty, so three fifty, anything above that fifty means that students are proficient. If you have anything from a forty to forty-nine range, that's partially meet standards, and anything thirty-nine or below is that they do not meet standards. And what's interesting is when you look at the data, you can see that we're aligned, but you'll see for near the year that we don't see large increases at a time. Traditionally, our students in Foley have done, have performed better on the math assessment versus the reading. So looking at our reading data, again, all the same course with the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year is in black, twenty-three, twenty-four school year is in yellow, so you can see where our mean is and then how our students did compared to the statewide, the statewide average. What I think is interesting, and one board member had asked, is some comparison data. So how do we compare to our surrounding neighbors? And so just ranking of twenty twenty-four, if anyone wants additional information, I do have a table from providing information back, I think, three years, but for this conversation, I thought it was most important you see where we are currently now. And you can see we're, we're right kind of in, in the middle. And as I mentioned before, when we look and then go back here and to show you, for example, reading, you, you can see it, and what is staggering and is concerning, when you look at the scores, just our statewide mean, when you see forty-five, seven forty-six, so you can see why there is a call for the state to focus on reading, because it is, it is an issue when our students in Minnesota are not reading on that proficient level. So going back to the comparison data, again, just a couple minutes, you have it in your board packet as well, but again, we're right in the middle, and I did this by hand, so I'm holding. We presented this to the district advisory committee, and no one said that I had anything incorrect with the reading, so I think this is pretty accurate to where, to where we are. Next steps, so what do we do with this data? We've heard the principals talk in length, and I know that they have had more in-depth conversations with their staff members, and looking at what is the data and really how to understand it. And I've given you just a real broad view of it, but there's a lot more that we look at. So we look at how we do our individual strands, for example, so that's way, that's how we break down the data, and really, we do need to focus on achievement gap, because we don't want to see that gap widening, so we want to close the gap. But it is really important that principals are instructional leaders, and then we do need to be able to work with our staff and collaborate, and we need a staff to, for new data, for new best practices. Our teachers are working together as well, so they know what our students need, because ultimately, we do want to see ourselves successful and learning in the classrooms. And as they go through this year, you know, they work on, principals do work with their staffs on plan of action for, for improvement. So that is my MCA review. Is there any questions on the board table that either I can answer or the person with the principals needs a building?
I have two questions, Trish. You talked about opt-outs. Can you give us a percentage or a number that opt-out?
I can't give you the percentage, but I think we've had around seventy-five students that opted out.
So the eleventh grade math test, for instance, we only had ninety students that took the eleventh grade math test out of a class of roughly a hundred and fifty. Both of the tenth grade tests, we had about a hundred and fifteen students that took it, and then out of the class of right around a hundred and fifty. So we're looking at thirty-five opt-outs in the tenth grade, and more like sixty opt-outs in the eleventh grade. It's, it's difficult to determine whether or not then you have reliable data. We're not unique in that. I mean, high schools are seeing opt-outs all over. I think once students find out that, hey, I can opt out of this test, and they start messaging all their friends across the state, it becomes kind of a popular thing to do. So we're hoping with some information at the parents and social media blitz of our own, and reduce the number of opt-outs, so we can get true reliable data to use to look at how our curriculum is aligning with the standards of the state.
And just a further elaborate, Sharon, we, when we first heard of MCA, it's very minimal opt-outs, and it just seems like every year, there's more and more and more, and District Box said we're not the only district, but I think just in the surrounding areas, we probably have the highest number of opt-out.
And right here, this, this, when the MCA data review, where you start with twenty twenty-one, saying that twenty twenty wasn't where you start with 2021 saying that 2020 wasn't available. I think it would be really helpful if we could see 2019 and then just say, no MCA's 2020, and see what we're trying, if we're trying to go back to what we did in 2019.
I can use a little bit of that in my data.
Well, I would assume, though, that the people who aren't taking the tests or opting out are probably not the people who give us better scores anyway.
Actually, that's not true. And I base that on when I looked at the kids who were taking our top math class, over half that group opted out. So again, it's anecdotal, but I'm assuming if they're in our upper math class, they would score well.
But of course, the other dangerous thing is that they just wrote down answers because they didn't care.
Yes.
They just hit this really low score, and that would really...
When I say we need to get kids to take the test, they need to take it, they take it seriously.
Yes.
And that's the...
You know, that's a really interesting point because when I rank the test scores, typically one year it's like a 13, 16, some 5, 16, by 13. Statistically, we know that someone is probably going through and just guessing. But we, I didn't see that a lot in our data. But, you know, I think that kids that do, if they have a handful, that probably will. But I do think that the teachers do a really good job talking about why MCA's are going in for taking. And we may get oriented so that there isn't a reason why they should, for me, to take the MCA's. They have as much time as they need. Typically, don't plan anything that's super long and at or so, recess or lunch or anything like that. So there's a lot of strategy and there's a lot of purposefulness when we're scheduling an assessment.
And now the read act, do you think we'll take different action of where we focus our, like interventionist, for example, because I think they're expecting now that in K. We're not, the people aren't saying, well, it's just third grade, you know, that's when you start learning. It's not like that anymore. So would we be putting emphasis on K? Because there seems to be a lot of data that if they aren't on track by K, it's likely that they're never going to be on track already.
Well, I think emphasis seems to come before kindergarten, is your free K. And so I think looking at early literacy is very important. And when we talked at our District Advisory Committee, and as soon as we gather more information, especially with the read act, I do feel that it's important that we're educating parents about things that they can do at home. And the one example that I gave just coming in prepared for school is just print awareness. And our students don't have books like they used to. And I was very concerned when I heard our data about print awareness. So what I mean by print awareness is that a student's notebook is. They know who the author of the book is. They know the letters. They know how to read a book from, to write, how to turn the pages. So I think those are things that we really do need to focus on. But if they're missing some of those four, I think that's very difficult. And especially when they're missing how we teach. So I think what I'm understanding and what I'm hearing, which I think is great from the training and we're finishing or closing in a module for you, is how we teach. And I remember when I learned how to read the alphabet, I learned the A, B, C, D. That's not how you teach the alphabet. And so it's just very interesting how we sing the alphabet, how we teach the sounds. So I think there is, there is truly a science to how to teach reading. And I'm interested to see when teachers are able, they have. I think a lot of them have the knowledge and are re-refining the knowledge base. And once they take what they're learning and implement that into the classroom, I think we're going to see some very positive results.
It's interesting to me the comment, like, kids not knowing what a book is. Because I think, you know, all this year, that this is a tough athlete. But, you know, I think about, like, my stepson, before I got to know him, right from birth, my wife had signed up for the Dolly Parton program, where you got like a book a month from this parent, the Dolly Parton began. And I think it's like awareness and things like that. You know, we have a great public library system here in town. And it's also connected, obviously, to other places. Yeah, I think that is an awareness, you know, okay. Because what I find interesting, talking about reading left to right, is I have a daughter who's wearing the manga right now. And that's because Japanese reads right to left. And so she got really into it for a while. And she says, it's so weird when I have to read at school that it goes from left to right. She's so accustomed to that. So that, that kind of ambidextrousness that's kind of acquired that they start processing other information.
Well, I think this, I think this is week or the week before, that something came out from Chrissy Rohn, I believe, about how to prepare. It was really good information that I certainly hope that parents took to heart. Because I, I think that's important, that we do not just say, oh, we're doing it, we're doing it, we're helping them do it.
And that was in our Karen's letter, and she'll provide an update every month in this as well.
Anything more to add on the MCA data review or the... Okay, our next item on the agenda is the review of the school board code of ethics discussion only. As board members, we're bound by the code of ethics. It's policy 209. And following Dr. Perry's resignation statement and the recent potential violation of code of ethics, I've consulted with staff members at the Minnesota School Board Association for advice on how to proceed and remove the district board. I reached out to Dr. Terry Laurel and Tiffany Guston. Terry Laurel suggested a deep dive into policy 209. Unless there's change, it will continue to be a problem in our district. Also, members of MSBA have come to our district in the past to help facilitate the holding board and help to work together competitively. Some background information to begin, the superintendent received for a reliable source that board members had met with or had had telephone conversation with an employee who had an issue with another employee at the district. One thing led to another until a statement was made by at least one board member through the effect of getting rid of people, as was previously stated. As board members, we cannot control who contacts us. There will be community members and staff that contact us at various times. However, how the board members handle the situation is key. We have the board norms. We have code of ethics policy for our review. The first thing that should have happened was for the employee to be directed to his or her direct report supervisor. That is part of their job, is to handle situations between employees. If that was not satisfactory, the next step would be to advise the building principal, if applicable. And if not satisfactory, then the situation would have been moved on to the superintendent. The school board have naturally, would have been the last point of contact and not solved by only two or three board members. The review of the code of ethics or conduct as potentially violated is the requirement to remember my responsibility is to set policy, not to implement policy. And this wording is taken directly from the policy itself. The requirement to recognize that my responsibility exercised through the actions of the school board as a whole is to see that the schools are properly run, not to run them myself. The requirement to work through the superintendent, not over or around the superintendent. The requirement to recognize that authority rests with the school board in legal session, not with the individual members of the board, except as authorized by law. The requirement to give the superintendent authority to measure it in terms of responsibilities. The requirement to refer all complaints to the proper administrative officer or insist that they be presented in writing to the whole school board for proper referral according to the chain of command. The requirement to recognize that school district business may be legally transacted only in an open meeting of the school board. We also have board norms. That is a working document for our school board. And there are potential violations of the board norms, which include the expectation that we'll work through a chain of communications, ensuring that concerns are addressed consistently and only escalated when necessary. The expectation that we will utilize the have you called escalation process. And if not being addressed during the have you called escalation process, we'll send the board chair, who will aggregate and send the board and superintendent. The expectation that during this process, the board should speak as far as the message is consistent. And that is my review of the code of ethics, policy, and the board norms as directed by the Minnesota School Board Association. Are there any questions regarding the code of ethics or any clarification needed?
Any discussion?
It is discussion.
Okay. I have a couple of things. Number one, on the first page, says attend school board meetings. I was looking up just on the phone now that the average school board person gets a year, between $67 and $37 per year. So we get $4,000 per year, which is, I know other school board members don't get this or higher than this by anybody else. I have no problem with that, because I respect the money. I have not been able to attend all school board meetings, and there are others who are not eligible to attend. Also, I wonder if we shouldn't be on a per diem basis, which all boards I'm on are all per diem. But if you get paid, why do you go to per diem in essence?
Ken, we were when we first started.
When we first started, it was per diem.
But that, what you're discussing, Mr. Anderson, is not part of the code of ethics. There's another policy for that.
But it's under, it says 209 code of ethics.
Then it's required, it is suggested to attend the meetings, but we're not discussing the per diem that's discussed of it. Through all different policies.
Okay, but this is one of the, it says, I will attend all school board meetings. I'm just questioning that. Number two, number four, it says, vote my conscience and support the decision of the school board. I think of all the time I've been here, I think we've had maybe five, I can't count my hands, five spiritual votes. Otherwise, all our votes are pretty unanimous, basically. And this whole thing works both ways. Because if you don't like the way the vote came out, and you're on the other side, you know, you got accepted, that's what it says. And both times that we have gone against what the administration asked us to do, we've been punished. We had to have the guy come in, the guy from Capers came in and did the lessons with us on how to behave as board members. And now we're giving this to say, okay, now we got to remind you what you have to do. All of this works both ways. That's all I got to say.
Does anyone else have anything to add on the code of ethics?
Just maybe a comment, just attend school board meetings? Like, to attend all school board meetings, like, we, it's, that's not, you know, as board members, that is our goal to attend, but you understand that you can't.
I know, but that's why we, we used to go per diem in all my, you know, I'm not allowed to be in board, and it's all a tradition. But I'm sure it's per diem. I'm talking.
I would like to comment on scene three on that. Making those fair to your remarks, et cetera, et cetera. I do think lines have been skirted and not crossed recently. When, you know, I think it gets skirted when we say, oh, a board member said in the conversation. Well, to be fair, it's allegedly said unless someone said, yeah, I said that. You know, I, I said something like my first couple of months on the board I shouldn't have said. And I came out and said, yeah, I said that. And someone said, oh, work, like, no, it was me. And I, I talked to it. Because, yeah, you know what, that was a stupid thing I did, and I did it. But I think also, in our last meeting, there were names said with actions. And I think that, I do think that they're treating each other with respect. Even if you don't like or agree with somebody, especially here at the board table, is very important. I don't need to agree with Ken on an issue. And, but I stop to say, well, Mr. Anderson or Ken, you know, I think this. And I think anything less than that gets very close to the kind of behaviors that would not be appropriate for our students in a PDIS system, that we would probably have a hotspot, as Mr. Bierman talked about, a reteaching. So I, I think, especially, we are going to be emotionally charged sometimes. And it's hard, especially in that moment, you know, not to get into that. We're all going to be human. I'm not asking to be perfect, but I'm asking this, people say, you know what? Yeah, I shouldn't have done that. And if it's a comment in private, say, hey, I heard you said this about whatever in private. Please don't, you know, or try to send them a straight private. Don't be like, well, I heard a board member say at the table. You know, if you haven't gone to them to talk to them about it, you know, does the whole group, does the public need to hear dirty laundry? I don't know. Those are my thoughts on that particular number.
We should not act like I'm worse.
I think, I think we can do at least that much better.
Well, I can just say acknowledgement that there has been, you know, some disagreements and some things that have happened and the fact that we can own it and move forward wanting to be better. I think there's a huge piece of, I mean, that's just advancement. It'd be different if we just all continued on the same path. But the fact that we're all impacted by what has happened in the past, what, you know, whatever it is, I think that says something about us.
And I think it's okay to say, I'm sorry, and I screwed up. And you know what, I let the moment get to me, whatever it is. Or, you know what, I still feel that way, but I probably could have said it or expressed it better. I'm sorry that those things happen. I think that's okay. I think that's, one, you know, we talked about modeling behaviors for our students. And think about how much better our students would do if, you know, afterwards, they said, yeah, you know what, I'm mad at you. I probably shouldn't have paid you, but I'm still mad at you. Well, it's fine to have the, you know, the emotion, it's just how we express it and things like that, so.
And having self-reflection, I think, is huge. And being, and having like self-awareness and all the things, like, that's part of growing. It's part of getting better.
Any further discussion on our review of the code of ethics? Hearing none, we'll move on to the policies requiring review. These are discussion and the action. This is actually the third and final reading of public comment on following policies. Policy 13, complaints, students, employees, parents, and other persons. We have policy 203.2, which is the order of the regular school board meeting. I'm just going to give a brief explanation on this policy. Our committee in need on September the 24th. The committee would like to table this particular policy until the organizational meeting. It was suggested by a board member. We did discuss it at length, and the reasons for the change of public comment were discussed and reasons for which they were changed by a past board chair, the recommendation of MSBA. Namely, the discussion went to that it is a board meeting held in the public, not specifically for the public, was the explanation to that board chair at the time. And so, as I mentioned, it was suggested that the policy be discussed possibly with the organizational meeting to be held in January of 2025. So we asked to table that policy and put it on a ticker for the January meeting. Stephanie and Wayne, you were in the policy committee. Is there any change to what I said? Okay, we'll move on to policy 203.5, school board meeting agenda. Policy 524, which is internet technology and cellphone acceptable use and safety policy. Policy 531, the pledge allegiance. Policy 533, wellness. Policy 704, development and maintenance of inventory of fixed assets and the fixed asset accounting system. Policy 709, student transportation safety policy. Policy 206, which is public participation in school board meetings and rights about persons at school board meetings and data privacy considerations. So as I said, it's discussion and action with tabling policy 203.2.
So I did notice... So I did notice, I think it was maybe in the board update about that small change about the pledge allegiance, just specifying, be more specific in the language about days. If anyone's been following our meetings, there's been some discussion about the specificity of the language. It was like, is it read every day, every instruction day? Because every day would imply that like, every day someone's in the building, they're doing this, you know, like, not even the students, like the staff and things like that. So it was, it's more specific language in here now, and I think that's what we all were hoping for. So I want to say thank you to the policy committee for that work.
Great.
No question, before basketball game, we play the national anthem. Does that count?
Well, if it's a school day, it was already done during the school day.
Well, they covered everything for that, don't they?
Sorry, probably.
So that is another day?
Pledge allegiance, yes.
We did, it's the end, we say it's the end.
Well, that's okay.
No, I have nothing wrong, no problem with that.
I don't think it's limited to one.
Yeah, that's it, I mean, I.
No, I, I have no problem with that. I just quite think it's particular.
Oh, does it say, so your question is like, when we say we'll be recited once, does that mean like?
Limited to, oh, that's. Well, we don't do a football game, or a wrestling match, we play, we play the stars playing the ball. The national anthem.
So I think we're okay with the policy as we stated this. All right, so I would need a motion and a second and a final, a third and final reading of both policies.
Motion to approve.
Sorry, I got.
Motion by Patrick, sent in by Wayne. All those who think are sitting by, best stand by.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to policies requiring review. This is the first reading and call for public comment on the following policies. Policy two oh two, school board officers. Policy two oh seven, public hearings. Policy two thirteen, school board committees. Policy four twenty-three, employee-student relationships. Policy five nineteen, interviews of students by outside agencies. So first reading and call for public comment. So the public comment on those policies at this time. Hearing none, we're going to move on to our budget and enrollment report. Ms. Mastah?
So if you can see, October has always kind of been our magic month. And we use our October first enrollment for the remainder of the school year for funding projections and things like that. So it's very good to see that it's stayed very consistent with September and what we were predicting. At the bottom there where it says district actual, it's not calculated automatically, but it's act, it ends up being one thousand eight hundred fifty-nine point eight five. And then if you look down a little bit lower, we budgeted at one thousand eight hundred fifty-eight point seven ADMs. So, I mean, this will continue to be updated throughout the year, but this is the first number that they take when they're looking at our aid and things like that for our revenue. And then with the budget report, you can see that year-to-date revenue so far is six million, five hundred eleven thousand, five hundred ninety-two, compared to three point two million dollars last year and four and a half million dollars a year prior. A lot of that just has to do with timing in regards to our audit last year and when we receive our, when we book our receivables and things like that. So that's why those numbers are kind of wildly different. It's just a matter of timing and how we're reporting our revenue. Expenditures this year, we're at four million seventy-one thousand compared to last year, four million three hundred seventy-three thousand, and the prior year was three point six million dollars. And then if you scroll down to fiscal year twenty-five, revenues by source, those are our other funds, like food service, community services, debt redemption, building funds, student aid, and discounter funds. We're seeing at four hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars for revenue right now, compared to five hundred eighty-three thousand last year, six hundred six thousand, eight hundred seventy-one prior year. And expenditures for this year, five hundred seventy-six thousand so far, compared to four hundred thirty-one thousand last year and five hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-six. Looks like we had some more student activity, activity this current year compared to the previous years. And that's what's causing that swing for the most part.
Is that thank you for your report?
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions from Ms. Mastah? Dr. Perry, do you have anything other reports to give this evening?
I do have a few other, I think this was to add. Over the Read Act update, our staff, we are progressing very well on the training. As a reminder, we do have our next professional development day scheduled for Wednesday, so October sixteenth. And this is our synchronous training session. And before we start the synchronous session, that our staff do need to have module three complete. And to give you an idea of where we are with the provision of the Read Act, we are a hundred percent complete for modules one and two. And this data may be off because this is from Thursday of last week, but for module three, we're at twenty-four percent in cohort one and then eighteen percent in cohort two. So we are using the time very wisely, so it's going very, very well. And thanking to Kristi Mon, for her continuing tireless work with the Read Act. And I see that Cheryl is in the audience, and I'd like to thank Cheryl for her number of years of service to Holy Public Schools. And the kitchen is the shining star, I believe, of Holy Public Schools. And it's because of Cheryl's leadership and her dedication to food service. And because of her dedication, when you're in the kitchen, you see how dedicated the staff are to making sure that the cafeteria is a really good place to go. It's one of my favorite places. I don't think you'll ever find a lunch or apple crisp that is done like Holy Public Schools. And Cheryl's worked with Barnes School, her state affiliation. And as I talked about, she was not only a leader here, but she is seen as a leader around the state. So we will miss Cheryl greatly. And again, thank her for her number of years of service to the school district, including our staff, our students, and then the community as well. Congratulations to Linda Corrigan, Amanda Wachowski, and Michelle Rose. They've been named for twenty twenty-four Leadership and Educational Excellence Award recipients. And they're chosen because of the examples that they set. Positive leadership and attitudes toward the educational field. And they have thorough understanding of the knowledge of their subject matter and leadership in curriculum development. And I have to say, and if you know any of these three, they are great teachers. And watching Linda, who is a title teacher in elementary school, what she knows and how she works with students and how she works with staff is absolutely amazing. Amanda, I'm proud of her work. I had her as a student at a thing called Stages as well. And it was fun for me because she did a presentation on PDIS, the leadership role that she's taken on with PDIS and just other events and different committees and intermediate. And finally, Michelle Rose, and to see Michelle Rose on stage last night at our Minnesota induction ceremony. And she does a lot for students, and I know she's been involved in, thank you, whichever committee I can think of. Michelle is there, so she truly is a leader within the district. And, and they will represent us in the banquet, I think, very, very well. And they will be recognized on October thirteenth in conferences. They're right around the calendar, so encouraging parents to make sure that they schedule conferences to come in and meet with their children's or child's teacher. And I know we have a lot of things online, but there is nothing as good as a face-to-face conversation with a teacher as well. So please make sure to our parents that we do schedule conferences. And yeah, right around the corner next week for our school. And then the beginning of the month for our intermediate and elementary school students.
Thank you. We will move on to the administrative team, Ms. Stewart. This last COVID season school year, in the area, we've just been busy kind of jumping in our new online system platform, AVAX, which is growing in our facilities as well as our in-class seats with preschool and FDC. So if you're looking to be back, we've been busy there while adding programs and kind of living the day-to-day busyness. But then also too, last school, it's really highlighted our youth programs at like home and at our, home and at our school. So we've kind of added our dance team, our younger dancers, our volleyball team, as well as our youth football, so that's like fun to see. And also congratulations to Cheryl, who's obviously in the age of retirement. So I've been, had to sign her here in office with her for quite eight years, so I've worn a lot of time for her, it's her environment. And she is one hard worker, a dedicated worker, and patient worker.
Thank you, Mr. Clouse.
I'll just highlight a few things from the high school. Homecoming a few weeks ago, a great turnout at the football game with great weather. The school spirit was high that week, of course. Last night, as Dr. Perry said, we had our Minnesota Honor Society induction. Thirty-one juniors, juniors and seniors were inducted. One of our larger groups, so we need quite a while. Ms. Plouski did a wonderful job, Ken made a wonderful speech. Conferences, as Dr. Perry said, are actually going on right now in high school. So if you missed them, you have another hour. We'll be over there. I'm going to just highlight a couple things. Mr. Ingles was not even going to be here. He is in charge of running the section tennis tournament. He texted me about twenty minutes ago and said the final match just finished. He's been there since before eight o'clock this morning. But that does highlight the tournament time is here. Swimming had their two team meet last Saturday. Tennis had team stuff last week, individuals this week. My week from this Saturday, half the football team in the state of Minnesota will be done for the year. So a lot of things happened very quickly. Also, the fall musical is coming up this June. Get a chance to see the best Christmas pageant ever is put on by our students. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I think it's twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, or whatever that weekend is. So I just wanted to highlight those in their absence. Thank you.
Mr. Gureman?
All right. Our students have the STAR tests on September first and fifteenth. So now our staff are looking through that data and then figuring out plans for our students and how to best serve those young people. We're getting really into a groove this school year, kids are getting routines, understanding where to go, how to do things. We still have a path building, you know, which causes, it's a good problem to have, but the kids are really kind of getting into a groove, knowing where, how to do things, the name of the processes. Middle school wise, we're having fall activities. You know, it's amazing how quickly the middle school seasons go. It's fun to be able to see that our students have the opportunities to compete in a wide variety of activities. So that's, it's a great opportunity for those kids to, you know, really share their gifts and have an opportunity to compete against other teams too. And we had a great homecoming week. It's always fun to enter into school homecoming, lots of energy. A pep fest with lots of yelling, screaming. But it was, it was fun to see the kids have a good time at the pep fest and they had a good time at the football game too. So it's nice being able to have a connected campus and feel as connected to the high school system as well. And congratulations to Cheryl also for the retirement.
And then Mr. Clover?
Just two things real quick. First, to, I'm going to shout out all the staff from all three buildings that are participating in Read Act training. It is a lot. It is good stuff. It is, but it is, it is intense. We are on pace to be one or complete after Wednesday, so that will be a nice milestone to have done. And second, just a welcome to Ms. Renee James. She will be an early learning core tutor, starting in the elementary school in Mrs. Nordman's room here in the next couple weeks. So she will join Rachel Zier, who will be returning. We'll have both of our four high school preschool classrooms covered by her learning core tutor to provide additional support. So we appreciate her and thank her for coming and look forward to working with her.
Thank you. We have our meeting, we have the notices listed here. On October seventeen through eighteen, there's school, it's NCA. The DAPs regularly scheduled school board meeting at six p.m. is going to be held on November thirteenth. And we have three reports here, I believe, D H C S, the DAPs has met. So that was this evening, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are there any board members that want to report on DAPs?
I can, unless you want to.
No, go ahead.
It was our first meeting of the school year and some new faces were there, which is always great for your look. DAPs, it's not just board members or teachers, staff, there's also community members that can come and join us. So if you're interested in joining the district advisory committee, Dr. Perry, I think you'd love to hear from people who volunteer for that. But I would say like today, some new faces and it was a good meeting. We heard about a lot of the MCA and goal data that we saw tonight, as well as we had the update from Ms. Rom on the Read Act as well and how that's going. And there was some really good questions, some good discussion. Yeah, join us.
I also believe that wellness met, pardon?
Right, I, I think by accident you were left off the list, but you are on the list now. So our wellness committee met and that's under the leadership of Cheryl and Peg and Morgan and now Steve. And we reviewed our goals, talked about just future initiatives. It was a very good meeting and we had really a good attendance to the first one of the year.
Health and safety also there, is that correct? Same?
We did, fortunately, I had a conflict and rescheduled. So typically we do review our work and comp claims, I know that was reviewed. And I don't think that there was anything else that we need to call.
Okay, and then policy committee also met, but we went through that detail already. We have a policy committee meeting coming up at the intermediate school. We have an opportunity for board members' comments. Wayne, do you have anything in this meeting?
I'd just like to thank Cheryl for her service and hope that she can enjoy her retirement. Good old eight years.
Thank you. Patrick?
Obviously, I want to congratulate Cheryl. I, I don't think I've known her my entire life, but darn close to it. I was friends with her kids growing up. They spent a lot of time in her house. They spent a lot of time at my house. Many rides shared and everything, so congratulations. And I, I hope, I hope you don't get bored or anything in your retirement. As was mentioned, the fall musical is next Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Please come see it. The neat thing about the fall musicals is while the spring play is just in the high school, the fall musical lets seventh, eighth graders also get in on it. This is really a starting point for a lot of our students in theater, whether they're in the ensemble or in tech crew or whatever, this is really where they start the learning. And my understanding is that this year, there is the most seventh graders of any grade in the, in the musical. So it's, it's directed by Janelle Hesch, who's our senior band director, and Amanda Kittle, who works here in the intermediate, and then Dan Carlson works on the sets. And the musicals have only gotten bigger and bigger and better and better and better. So please come see that. Just kind of a shout out, I think, to those who really built a wonderful program and seeing, you know, like, the kids coming up and what are really excited. Well, part of that is because after this is done, there is a middle school one act that's going to be happening in these same people, right? So these, these are how programs get built. We are, we are experiencing really a renaissance in our arts in holy public schools right now. Consistently for like the last three, four. Consistently, for like the last three, four years, we've had record numbers of new band students in the intermediate with very low attrition. Lots, lots of kids staying in band while they're in intermediate school. I, I have the privilege of playing with Ms. Darling in the St. Cloud Municipal Band, and she comes in, she's all excited because she's got so many kids, and she's got, oh my gosh, we can do this, and we can do this. And so that's only going to make things just keep growing and, and, you know, when they get to high school, they're going to keep, it's going to keep the band thing there, right? Well, what's that going to do? Well, a lot more people are going to march, what's that going to do? Well, then a lot more people are going to see all the holy band at those parades, and you know, it kind of becomes another source of community pride. But then also, those same kids, a lot of them will be in the pit orchestra for the musical, and they'll be in this activity, and they know this person, and they meet kids at band contests from other schools, and it, it just expands the community and everything. And the same thing with the theater, where sure, we have our local productions, but then there's the one-act competition, and these same kids will go and be a part of that, where they go and perform a one-act play at different schools all throughout the, the area, and you know, there's competitions, like the sectionals and state and all that. So these are all pieces of our community, and so I know a lot of people kind of laugh or like, oh yeah, okay, and you know, he's drinking the Kool-Aid, but I, I mean it when I say that our school community is the gemstone and the, the crown jewel of our community, is a source of community pride, our school here, and these are the pieces of it. You know, we, it's tournament time, our students are competing all over, right? They're, they're meeting all sorts of other people, they're, they're going on these places. It, it's fantastic. So please, thank you all for your support, your individual students and your, your, what's a grand students, you know, you're not your direct students, but maybe your niece students, nephew students, whatever they are to you, because that's what makes our school community awesome.
Ken, do you have anything?
Yeah, Wednesday, we have Resources Training Solutions, and then right after, then we actually have two meetings. One will be our regular meeting, because we still try and decide what we're going to, what a new place to own our business. And then afterwards, we're going to be dealing with the Read Act, and Chris sent me the information on that, and dealing with the employees and the involved negotiations, so that's going on on Wednesday. And also, on the 30th, we have our LEA banquet, and so we honor four of our outstanding teachers, and our superintendent, our presiding superintendent will be Chris Perry this year. I get to announce her, I always get to announce the superintendent. And you write your own resume, by the way. Did we told you that, right? Well, I'll just, I usually beer off a little bit, but I'll try. So that's, that's good. Again, Cheryl Pick, I want to congratulate you. You really brought our, our service, our school service, up to the top, and we really appreciate that. Thank you very much. National Honor Society, I was there last night, in fact, I should be at the National Honor Society at night night. One of my grandsons is getting inducted into the Nell Ferber National Society, but I'm here with my duty. But they did a wonderful job, they really got to come in with Michelle Flosk and Andrew Flosk. They put on an excellent program. The only thing I maybe do is give them a thing to light the candles a little bit better to all.
I think it's more training than it lights.
They now have these things where you have a little spark in here, and you can do that, which really slips. I told her I'd get one for her. But we had, Joel's daughter was there, Clara, and I was sitting next to Emma Luchinsky's daughter, and it's just a fun group to be around. And they asked me to speak, I was very pleased to do that. And then afterwards, we had a reception that was paid for by the school board, they very appreciative of that. And I saw so many former students, it was really exciting to be able to do, and had a chance to talk to a lot of them in the street. They didn't ask me to speak next year, and I said, well, I won't be on the board, and so we don't care when I speak, so I guess I'll have to look to see what happens. So anyway, that was very nice, everything was done very well. I want to thank you also for, for having our meeting that we had on Tuesday. I was on a 16-day trip, I told you I couldn't get back until the 8th, and I couldn't be here, so I settled at 8:00 PM, and the meeting was scheduled for the 8th and 7th PM. I was a little disconcerted though, I was assuming we were going to have a closed meeting, and found out it was an open meeting, and that was kind of bothersome. And then we had a little problem, that's Patrick and I, a few of those, that we wanted the meeting open to a conversation and input. And as I understand now, that since we've contacted lawyers and everything, there's no need for that meeting. That could have been handled without anything being done, and I would appreciate that, we just solved a lot of problems there. I don't believe that I needed, so that's all I can say about that. Important communication, so I came, I had no idea what was going on. I don't, Patrick, I don't think you, they do this, you know?
They, they did the topic, yeah.
Yeah, but communications is not there about what was going to happen. If I don't know, I would send this to the man, so, okay? That's all.
Stephanie?
I just want to say congratulations to Cheryl, I wish you the very, very best in your retirement.
Cheryl?
I want to thank Hans for the great article celebrating our custodial department. Schoolkeepers and custodians, thank you. You are doing more with less, and I've been to many schools, ours shines. Thank you to Cheryl Pick for her positive work in our nutrition department. Your leadership made us the best in the state and envy of men. Last night, I attended the National Honor Society induction. I thought it was a very good presentation, it was extremely efficient, I thought. Thanks to Ken for speaking on behalf of the board, as his project is very close to his heart. And Principal Boss gave a very genuine speech and grabbed a sweater and celebrated fall.
I would also like to congratulate Cheryl Pick on her retirement, and to thank her for her years of service to our students and to our community. I will not be in attendance at November 13th fourth meeting, I have an appointment in Rochester that cannot be rescheduled, but I would like to address something that Mr. Ken Anderson said we didn't need the meeting. It had to be board action for renewal or non-renewal, so we absolutely didn't need the meeting. Steve, do you want to add anything to the necessity of meeting?
Well, the superintendent's contract did provide for the board to make a decision within a certain timeframe, a school year management to offer the superintendent another contract, and so the meeting was called to satisfy that requirement of the contract. So the meeting itself was necessary. And you, and you couldn't close the meeting, quite frankly, because you can't close a meeting just to discuss credit gap, that's not legal in itself.
Thank you. I just have a bit of information that I'd like to share with Dr. Bailey, and the board at this time, so just pass one to you. I'm not sure that Nathan Anderson gets notified. This document states that I will be ending my participation as a member of this board effective January 2nd, 2025, and it is a resignation letter for my membership of Holy Public Schools Board. And I would take a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion by Ken, seconded by Stephanie. Cheryl? Cheryl? I'm sorry. Motion by Ken, seconded by Cheryl. All those who think are seeing the flag, standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed?